It's doing the same thing, budgeting for the smaller payment, but if we get excess, then we would make the full payment by the end of the year. We'll probably have the other, the pension folks back here in December to talk through what our funding status is, but as we look towards 2025, very exciting. Very late tip is coming offline. It actually comes on the 31st of this year. We'll get our last increment from that TIF in 2024. It's budgeted in this budget to about 1.3-ish million. So, once we get that last 1.3 million, we'll exhaust all of it, spend it on projects, infrastructure, and then for 2025, when we budget, we will budget for the capture of our portion of that increment. All the other taxing districts will likely take their portion of it as well. And so, this will allow us to budget for the full pension payment if there is agreement that we would take that entire increment and put it directly towards pension. So, we put ourselves on this path to fully fund at not just the minimum amount, but the actual recommended amount. So, that is a huge win.
So, on that, once it comes off the tip and then we're on the basic recapture in 2025, is that correct? Do we have any kind of forecast of what that would potentially look like as a true kind of...
So, our portion of the tax bill is approximately 11%. So, I think it's somewhere around 250,000. Somewhere around there.
Okay.
A healthy number.
Yes.
Much healthier for the school district, people get almost a million. But, the park district will pick up quite a bit. The fire district will pick up almost 200,000.
The township will pick up some.
Township will pick up some. Yeah. So, one of the things I'm going to talk more about tonight is the vehicle parking tax. So, you probably saw in the memo that last year we projected that we would bring in, I think, $150,000 in revenue from the truck, from the vehicle parking tax. It's been interesting to observe. It's been a little choppy. We're trying to understand exactly how people are reporting this, how they're counting it, how they're billing. And there's different ways that each entity does it. But, we've been able to understand that it's, the way that we've implemented it is okay, but probably not the best way. So, one of the recommendations that we have is to, to change it to just a flat percent. Right now, if we were to convert our existing rate, it would be about 3%. State of Illinois is at 11%. So, there's usually 3% and 11%. We have a little bit of room if we want to raise it. I think if we did raise it somewhere in the 5% to 6% range, we could probably get at least $200,000, $250,000 dollars a year in additional revenue. And if we did want to go that direction, I would recommend that we start with our proposed transition away from the part-time officers to full-time officers. We had hoped to put that in the search budget. It is not currently in there. If the board did want to move forward with increase in this tax, we would put one of the two officers in there that we think we need to fully transition away from part-time officers, so that hopefully by mid next year, we would be having at least one full-time officer put in on board and getting in the hiring process to meet some of the end work. I think it takes a lot of time to ramp them up if they don't come in laterally. If we didn't want to go with the flat percent, we could just increase our per day rate from 50 cents to a dollar, or from $6 to $8 on them per month. Some of these entities are doing quarterly rate. I'm not much sure if they're doing the math properly. And/or some of them are doing like by acre. Can't really fit in this box.
Right.
So, if we were to do the percent of capture, we could buy acre. So, that's, that's one of the things that we've taken away from this.
And it would mimic what the state about, what they're already doing for the state.
Right. It probably would make it much simpler for them from an economic standpoint, if we just did what was already in place. And if we did go in this direction, we recommend that effectively if February wants, that give everybody enough time to make the adjustment and start collecting taxes.
Yeah, you had sent the, or maybe it was Brandis, sent the ASVAR first report. And it was weird to me because on some months, some entities would have it really high and then it would go down low and really high. And then, in looking at it, it looked like there was some quarterly, potentially quarterly payments. And then, I talked to one of my neighbors when I was out walking around and everybody was out doing their leaves. And, and he and another neighbor rent from over there for some of their, their trucks that they have. And, yeah, they, annual plans or whatever. So, it, further drilling down into those idiosyncrasies of day, month, quarter, year, annual, would kind of make sense to simplify it. So, when you're saying they're doing it by acre, how many trucks fit into an acre? Yeah, yeah. So, now you have to, okay.
Magic numbers.
Yeah.
So, is this something we need to vote on, or do you just need a consensus?
Definitely the direction of consensus, and then we'll bring it back with the modified revenues.
On the final.
At our next meeting, on the final budget adoption again.
I think it's great, you hit about 11% ish.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, seems easier for them.
Yep.
And we're currently, you said, they quit one of 3% and the state does 11%. And you're talking about roughly 9% ish then?
5%.
Five.
Or 5%.
Five.
I would say that at the minimum, five. If you felt more comfortable, do something a little bit more, I would go for six, and we'll see how it goes for the year, and then we evaluate next year.
Let's do six. I would say six. I mean, this, this enterprise is taxing on, on this village, on the police department. You know, it costs the village to have all these people out there parking. So, I think we haven't been able to cover any of those fees in the past, and now we have an opportunity, I think we should do it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's why we recommended funding the police officer with this additional revenue because of the resources that are utilized in that area. And I, I think you might be aware of the, there is a proposal to put in some license playreaders at the entrance to the business park over there.
That would be great. That would be fantastic.
That will help a lot.
With the security issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me. Yeah. Andy?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's not fair.
And next.
But just an overview of our debt service, our capital. And at the end of the year, next year, we're proposing for 16.5 million dollars budgeted, mostly because 2 million is put in there for the, actually, I think the entire cost of the parking garage center, so the, the cap, capital, all of it is in here. Partially funded by grants and partially funded by TIF funds, and partially funded by bond issue, if that proceeds, or hopefully if money proceeds. And revenues look good. The economy is still doing very well. We've seen some slight variations in some revenues, but overall, holding steady. That may change in another year, it's hard to tell. But for now, we're very comfortable with how revenues are looking and sales taxes, all of those other things, very solid.
So, when I was looking at, I'm, I'm sorry, you can tell I studied this.
Yeah.
Because I'm doing my own at work right now, which is much, much less complicated. But, when you look at, it looks like what you guys are forecasting for '24 is very conservative and actually, in most cases, less than '22.
And I wouldn't say that is a practice that we want to get away from and try to more accurately budget for what we expect. But the historical practice has been to budget very conservatively. And then, at the end of the year, when there is that surplus, to pay that face pension. So, what I would like to get to next year is accurately budgeting for what we think we're going to get. And with a small budget, it's, it's hard to really right-size your expectation of revenue because if there's any fluctuation, it's very detrimental, and I can understand why people started to find this factor pause. But, we're trying to gravitate more towards accurately accounting for our revenues. And then, if we have a healthy cash balance, that will help us weather any storms and fluctuations in the revenue. So, it's just two methodologies of how you could do your budget, and I'm trying to move us, move us in a different direction.
Good luck.
Is that including eventually putting in the budget, the full police pension fund amount?
Yes.
So, that's the future, hopefully.
And we do have the full, like, the lower of the two amounts, just not the recommended.
Right. So, we are proposing a 5% increase in property taxes again this year, same as last year. This would give us an additional, I shouldn't put the number here, but I think it's somewhere around $30,000, $35,000, which would go towards the police pension payment. So, we're going from 725 to 761.
And it's just the police pension portion, like, the property tax bill, still say zero for the village, but police pension would go up a little bit.
It'll be in that line?
Yeah, and it's 5% of the village's of, of that amount, right? It's not 5% of the overall, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. English major attempting math.
I understand that it's 5% of our portion, not 5% of the overall bill. That gives people hard to act.
Yes.
But, when the other taxing bodies, theirs in, the band of being that, they may not, we don't know what everybody else is going to levy at this point. But, I would expect that the school district will probably take full CPI or 5%, which is, you know, CPI, I think, was over 5 this year, so they'll probably take the 5%.
Okay.
So, just, this is recapping. We have regular contractual increases in pay for union employees and 2% merit and 2% cobra for non-union. So, that's, and stub year, we normally would have given out increases, pay one, and just hone them to January, so that the 4% could go to effect January 1st, so the 4% would have been made one, so that now we're going to be on that schedule. And when we renegotiate, union contract should try to get the union on that schedule as well. And we've got the new deport tenants and our management chair and budgeted, and one full-time police officer, and all of the other capital projects that we discussed last year.
So, okay, so, the one deport tenant is really two-part time, right? And then, the Tyler, Tyler, right?
Caleb.
Caleb?
It's okay.
Anyway, Caleb, so, management intern, so, we were introduced to Caleb, what are the roles, responsibilities, and that kind of thing, special projects? I don't think, and you might have been formulating them a while.
This is a great time to talk about the valuable addition to our staff. I'm embarrassed now.
Sing praises.
So, there is a shortage, I would say, of people who do the work that I do, which is village managers, city managers, village administration, and that the, less and less people are going into the field. And part of getting the experience that you need to eventually do this one day, a lot of colleges that master public administration programs have an internship. Usually, it's 18 months to 20 years long, so it covers your entire duration of your schooling, maybe working, maybe 10 hours a week, and maybe more in the summer. So, it gives you that hands-on, real-world experience, and it lets you do projects that actually essentially implement a policy, and you're getting some really good hands-on experience. Caleb, is it Paul? Yes, and what name are you graduating?
Well, my capstone's going to be this spring. I have just recently decided to get a GIS certification, so I would have to take a class in the fall, even though I would essentially be done this spring, so.
Yeah. So, part of the internship program helps people build the skills necessary to suddenly become village managers, city managers. But, the really great benefit is that we get a solid, individual who's proofing with us day-to-day on projects that actually are very meaningful, and it's really, really helpful and at a very reasonable cost. So, it's affordable and it's to a benefit. Caleb has already carried more than his share of water on many, many things, and we're real fed to have him.
Can you give some examples of some projects?
So, he's working on the apartment payments for Land and Zoning, the referral from Persia. And he's also working on, we're doing an audit of all of the TIF payments to major developers. So, I've noticed, we have, we have a handful of developers who get the majority of our TIF funds, and I want to ensure that those dollars are paid appropriately because it is a massive dollar amount. And then, every year, we improve TIF notes for additional TIF eligible expenses. There's always latitude in those expenses in terms of the law, and what's eligible and what's ineligible, and sometimes it's, you know, bring all things in there that aren't necessarily eligible. I want to be way more valid than, than we have been in the past, because this is real, this is a lot of money. Millions of dollars sold of course during three years, in certain cases, for some of the major developers. So, Caleb's been working on compiling the history of all payments to major developer, so that we can have a firm who specializes in TIF, look at all that payments, make sure the interest is calculated correctly. Because I feel like they have added interest, and then compounded the interest, and it should not be going that way. So, our numbers don't match. And I, I always say, this is good for both parties. It's good for us, it's good for the developer, because there's a common understanding of what the numbers are and what the expectations going forward. So, there's not going to be surprise two years from now when the village says, hey, well, we've got bigger numbers than you have. So, I say this is a partnership. We are working with the, the TIF consultant that we used last year. And they review all, what I highly recommend is going forward, every time eligible expenses are submitted, that they're reviewed by the independent party and not by village staff, because that creates this animosity of why, if you're in this part, where you have somebody who does this on a day-to-day basis, they're going to have a much better handle on whether certain things are to eligible or not. So, we, we did receive some to eligible expenses in this August. We now brought those to the board, and it's where we need to compile all this information and have the consultant review them. And then, once we get a final number, we'll bring that to the board for a final approval. Because, again, the ones that were submitted, 50% of them, in my opinion, aren't eligible. That's just my opinion, and I'd like to bet to confirm or deny by somebody else. And in the past, we had always run the tests with attorneys, who always gave us this, oh, yes, I review them, but if you really want to review them tighter, you should have somebody else review them who does this. And so, it was like, it was always an asterisk.
Right.
They're good, but I wouldn't testify. So, we're going, we're, we're going to get to the point where the process is much bigger than it is right now.
So, Caleb's doing some auditing and...
So, he's done a ton of like work on compiling all this information, because we've been paying these payments, I think, eight, 10 years?
Yeah.
And we have 10 or 13 years to go, so. And the payments are now up to over $1 million a year, so it's a significant amount. And going forward, any new notes that are approved, don't bear any interest, because we renegotiated that at the last, at the end of the year last May. But the interest on previous notes is still improving. And we may not ever get to the point where we start paying that off, because these are the ones we're adding on. But, we do want to make sure that the village is taking its share of this money and not getting short of it. So, that's, and what else are you hoping?
Well, two other things to add. On the website, one thing you will see is I've added the, pretty much all the ordinances and resolutions in front of the book form is now online.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so that...
So, you don't have to go to that other form place or whatever.
Yes, I mean, and they're still there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
The folders, and we still have the books, obviously. But what's been really helpful with this project, combining all the data, I can go into the search everybody's has, and I can type in the keywords I would look for, and it pops up right there.
So nice.
And that's been really helpful. There's another, so, beyond 2000, they're all kind of jumbled together into one scan, so hopefully can eventually break those up, but for now, it's just all on there. And then, I'm also working with Public Works on a video, because that's my old skillset. I was in production for my second career now. And so, I'm working with them to do a water treatment video on, on water processing, like how to drink water. So, that has been, you know, we've been working on that, and hopefully can get that done in the next couple of months.
Right.
Two other projects.
And not that I want to give Caleb any more work, but I have a question. It just made me think about the parcel of land where it must get cut down, those trees. And we were, at one point, talking about looking to see if there were other parcels that were, like, unclaimed or just hanging out there. So, I didn't know if, that just made me think about that, where...
That's another great project that I'm happy to tell you.
I'm here to learn and...
Now we got you.
Critically important, critically important. I actually just spoke to a gentleman who bought a house just over the border to incorporate , at the end of the, it's Belgium Road, private property. Where we hand out, when we go past here and then...
Dunkin' Elgin.
Dunkin' Elgin, I think it's, yeah.
Yes, so this gentleman, he was confused, he didn't understand, you know, if he was part of the village or not, and he's going to water, but you're not part of the village, so it's like, yeah, taxation application, and we tried to do our best to sell him on why we approved him as a joint village. But there's a lot of those parcels that, you know, we, we service with water, but they're, they're not in the village, and if that's the case, they should be in the village.
Yes.
So, that's another part of that proj, that project, is identifying all of those and trying to bring them in. And sometimes, you can, you can help people, like, I tried to sell on our ones in police services, it's like, why would I want to join a village? Because then you're not giving, you can't, you can come out every time, and you need a police, it's only right down the street. But sometimes, you can also do a forceful annexation if you meet certain requirements. So, for some of these properties that we service with water, we may look to do that with us. We're also working with the milk trail, and we also service them with water. It's a huge parcel, it's huge on the first. So, that would be huge to pull that into the village, especially, I should say, mine, against redevelopment portions of it. There's certain empty parcels that are ready for adding, you know, that is, all gone stuff.
Anything else on Caleb? It's all about Caleb too. And then, I just wanted one clarification on the full-time police officer. Is that, like, a new, new headcount? Or, there was also talk about transitioning some full-time, part-time to full-time?
Do you want to clarify that?
Sure, so, we had put in a budget initially that we were preparing to acquire two additional full-time officers. So, right now, our authorized rate is 15. The two additional will get us up to 17. The benefit is, is, you mentioned it already, we would be able to phase out our part-time program to the point that we don't need that at all, essentially. One of our part-time officers is also a licensed clinical psychologist. We're thinking about keeping her around part-time to be able to service that clientele. But outside of that, we would be able to get rid of the, the clientele. We would be able to transition over from part-time officer.
Okay. So, this would go from 15 to 16 then?
Yeah.
And potentially, one, if there's a part-time officer, that might pass through the whole process of hiring for full-time?
We, we actually do have a part-timer who might be interested in becoming full-time, but also kind of on your, your accord.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Is there going to be further discussion about the police budget during this meeting, or we have other questions about the police, should we ask those now?
I think so.
My question was, shoot, I forgot the question was. I'll think of it later, nevermind. Is this official over here? No?
Is this one?
No.
I will say, just as a heads up, it's, it's a timely discussion, bringing the 16, getting it to 16, because one of my part-timers today let me know that he was transitioning away to another department.
Okay.
And he is the part-time officer who takes almost all our part-time officers.
Okay.
So, that's going to present some challenges.
Oh, good to know. Is there, is there a line item in the police budget for a deputy chief?
For what?
A deputy chief.
Yes, there is. We're actually recruiting right now for that position, because, as Josh explained it to me, and when I invited him to do this, the vacation picking time is now, but all the next year. So, you're promoting internally, that has bearing on those vacation picks, so, I know you're going to have to do a little bit of processing.
Per our union contract, I was supposed to put out ship bids November 1st. I spoke with our union, got them to push that back a month, because as Eric was saying, promoting internally from within is going to change the ships, and who's going to be on the ships, and who's eligible to bid for that particular ship, because it's all based on seniority, so.
So, we did get multiple applicants, and I know the goal is to make a decision in the next four weeks.
Awesome. Okay.
Okay, so here's the pension payments, and you can see this, this is the recommended minimum contribution we've been budgeting for, and then what we actually made. So, most of the years, we've made more than what we're budgeting for significantly. So, again, repeating the goal, trying to just budget for this, because this is what we're actually doing, so.
The 2023 thing was so weird.
Why does it say 2023 actual is 119,000?
I think because, yeah, this, this potentially be wrong, because we obviously made more than that. I'm only thinking that if we made the payment during stub year enough, at the end of fiscal year.
I mean, either that is wrong, or the recommended is wrong, I would imagine. I don't know, it just seems weird.
Yeah, we do have two different 2023 numbers up there, so I'm guessing. Is there something walking?
Yeah, we'll get clarification on that for the next meeting. But down here, this is our minimum contribution is 826. And then, our actual recommended contribution, we want to want to, and then, police pension for its own recommended number, that's not be able to get, but should be in the next year.
So, we budgeted for the minimum, and we'll do what we've done the last few years, and any excess we have, we'll put in.
Here's a recap of the, you have other projects, and I think it's a little bit of math, so, Phil, do you want to talk about this?
Math.
Sure.
Yay, who would wish for the math?
Just a couple of notes. The, the blue line is a project, the village of Carpentsville approached me recently to say, that particular stretch of road, so it's Oak Ridge between Hawthorne and Greenwood, I believe. The center line of that road splits the two communities, so it's a fifty-fifty cost share. So they're going to include that in their street project next year and ask if we would share the cost. So we budgeted for our portion of that road. Then we have some other roads in the Lakewood Estates area that we're going to resurface, propose to resurface next year. Two of them are contiguous with the fifty-fifty with Carpenter'sville. These roads in the Lakewood area, we've received numerous complaints in recent years on, on condition of some of those were, essentially all of those roads, so we've added those to the project, proposed project for next year. And then, of course, along Route twenty-five, we have Albert and Pumani, or actually that's Richardson on the west side of twenty-five, so.
I walk all those roads.
Pardon?
I walk all those roads with my dog and they're pretty rough.
Yeah.
But we like it that way because it keeps the traffic slow.
There is a traffic calming component of that. No question. There is, back in that Lakewood Estates, there is a section of road that's gravel. Yeah. Maxwellton or?
I'll show you where it is.
I mean, is there a, is? It's right, it's right here.
Yep.
And, I mean, I guess I don't understand why that never shows up on this as a bad road, seeing as it's real bad. I mean.
There's, there's no property accesses off of the gravel part, okay? So all of the drives are on the other roads and the, the asphalt part ends in that one little section right where the last driveway is. So.
Here, then right around here up doing the back.
A little bit further down, but yeah. So from, from Max, is it Maxwellton?
Yes.
Up to that point, so pretty much where the writing is on that, that's the gravel part.
So it's kind of like an alley behind the homes and not the main road?
It's like, it's, well, right, right off to the edge, there's a log cabin. It's like you're walking in, you're walking in the woods.
Hasn't really been a need to resurface it, although my first year here, one of our dump trucks was plowing through there and got stuck in the mud. So we had to kind of change our operating procedure so we don't use, we don't plow that stretch of road anymore. We typically don't use it. So it's, it's used, I would imagine, because there's, obviously we, it's maintained as a gravel.
It is a village road, right?
Correct. But to this point, we've seen no reason to.
Have we filled it at all with, with gravel?
We have.
Yeah, it's been limestone tailings and that have been put down at various times when, when the potholes or the trenches by wheel and like screwballs that are like wanting to do, you know, mudding and all that kind of stuff, go back and tear it up.
Activity back in that area too, it's. All right. Hey, I mean, it would be expensive to do, I'm sure, so if nobody's complaining around it, I guess, it's something, but it seems like.
The people that walk seem to like that, that down. I see a lot of walkers back there along that road. And everybody else that drives can get, has paved up to their driveways that are along that road. So doesn't seem to be that much of a clamoring issue. I think people would be more concerned about their oak trees than, than, than the truck.
This program outside of the flats neighborhood really addresses most of our bad, poor streets in, in the village. So once we get through the twenty twenty-four program, twenty-five and beyond, we're going to begin working on some of the roads first, the northern half of Second, Adams, Wenthols and so on and so forth. So we've got. And is that going to be in coordination with our lead pipe? Yes.
Yeah.
Replacement as well? So in twenty twenty-four, we're going to do the best we can to replace lead services. So the northern portion of Second has yet to be improved. So the southern portion, south of the bike path, was improved in recent years, not two, five, six, seven years ago, something like that. So north of the bike path, we're going to work on the lead services on that stretch of road and then also on Adams. So that's the, I think it's, but, and then, so we'll replace, try to replace as many of those lead services as possible in twenty-four. And then in twenty twenty-five, we'll reconstruct. Most of those roads will require a complete reconstruct, new curb, base, surface, everything. Whereas these roads here are more or less just a grinding overlay. It's a resurfacing project. So the cost of the reconstruction streets will be substantially higher than what we're seeing here.
Long overdue though.
Very much, very much.
So just to go back to your other comment about streets and, and maps, where Council Hill is, there is that C that's off to the right-hand side. That one long road in between each end, it looks like a road there. That doesn't exist at all.
No.
That just is people's backyards and I believe in easement for common. So. But I think, I'm not sure if that's, it's, again, that's on the board of East Dundee and Carpenter'sville. And so I'm not sure who vacates it or, you know, if it's even worth redoing the map.
Example, this road here doesn't exist either. This is, this portion has been vacated, so this, this road came from Heinz and Associates. I'll see if we can update the actual map here, but this stretch around here, and where does this exist? This is essentially a driveway here.
Why do we have a roadmap with all these roads that don't exist?
The right of ways exist, but they've been vacated and the map just, here's an updated map, I guess, to this point, so.
Interesting. Can we get Caleb on this?
Once Caleb gets into his, achieves his GIS certification, which would be a perfect application for GIS.
We'll have that system all set up right on, too.
Yes, yes.
All right, I think that brings us to the end of presentation. So this is all reviewed and we can just go to questions.
Well, I saw a note in here about a spreadsheet that has the three million dollars worth of capital deferred projects, but I can't find the spreadsheet on, in the packet, at least, I don't.
Yeah, there is, that was in the budget notes from.
The week before the meeting before?
Yeah, the sixth.
For the deferred projects?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was in page.
That's compensation.
It's on page one hundred of the agenda.
Today, today's agenda?
Or the sixth.
So, yeah, to be exact, it's page one oh seven of the.
Of today's?
Of the, of today's agenda, PDF on our website, yes.
Yeah, I see it.
You did scroll all the way to page one oh seven.
I see it, thank you.
One oh seven?
So one of the things I don't know that we really talked about was the first one on here, Village Hall and Police Parking Lot Expansion. So the police department has the vacant lot to the west. That's sort of grass gravel right now. Their parking is pretty tight. We would like to, at some point, pave that grassy area to the west to add additional parking. And then we would move basically all staff parking back there. And then where staff currently park on the west side of Village Hall, we would make that public parking. And then on the east side of Village Hall, we'd really like to do some beautification. It's, you know, the, the way that you pull up now to visit the police department, it's not that fitting. So we would propose to grass over that, put some landscaping in, put a real curb in and then restore street parking. So you'd still have proximity to park really close to the police entrance door if you were a member of the public. And if those were full, you could go in front of Village Hall or west of Village Hall. But that would be the goal at some point in time to sort of make that a more pleasant entryway into both public service buildings and really make the downtown shine a little bit brighter.
How do you feel about that, Chief?
I think it's a great idea, yeah. You don't want to lose space back there, no.
Um, is, is, do our codes, are we using it? Or do our codes allow for daily parking on there when it's needed, if it's unpaved?
We've never explored that and.
Need it's, yeah.
When we've, I mean, there's been some times when it's been very full, but we just kind of make it work. I think that's a good fit for a grant project to do some permeable paving back there where we can do some water retention. So that's really what we want to focus on like this year, preparing to apply for that. So maybe we can get some of that, that cost funded from other sources and do something a little bit more sustainable than just regular pavement.
Love that idea.
I do have a question. It was actually in your report the other day, Eric, last week, two weeks ago, about the, as of our software, and you listed all of the streaming revenues that we've received. And that was interesting, but, you know, it listed all the different services. There was one very interesting one that was missing here.
Yes.
And that was Netflix, which is probably the biggest one, right? So where was that?
Yeah, that one, we've not been able to discern exactly why they're not complying. We did reach out to them in the beginning with contacts that never got bounced back. So they were aware, assuming whoever, you know, got it ran it up the chain. And looking at that report was a glaring omission of, hmm, what the, what the heck? Like we need, so they will end up having to pay that because we can go back and still get that, even if they didn't charge the subscribers. But if anybody here has Netflix, I would be interested to see if you are being charged it and they just haven't been remitting it.
That's a good question.
But we are in the process of working to find appropriate contact there so that we can get them trued up and compliant.
I will check. On the streaming services, it is not always easy to find a breakout of all the charges you're actually getting charged.
Right, right.
I love that everybody just flicks on their computer at the same time. We, we talked about keyless entry and looking at the other deferred things.
I think we talked about the other.
Miss Panji Hoth, we talked about, GIS we talked about. I think I understand it a little bit more now that Caleb's here to explain it all. No kidding. Heinstra, I think, I'm just drowling through, are you guys on that page?
Yeah, well, I guess I would ask about that, GIS. Is that like something that we're mandated to partake in?
It's definitely not a mandate, but it's a little bit uncommon that we wouldn't have it. Because so much of everything we do is now GIS-based. You know, having an inventory of all of our sewers, water, like all of our water infrastructure in some kind of GIS system so that we can put together, you know, a, a long-term replacement plan for water mains and sewer mains. All of that data needs to be, you know, inventoried and then reside somewhere. Also, a lot of communities will do a public tree inventory, any trees on the public way. They'll do an inventory on all of the water. Fire hydrants, yes, thank you, you know exactly what I was looking for. So all, all of that information is information we don't have.
Yeah.
And it makes it difficult for us to do long-term planning as it relates to the water infrastructure because it's one morning, we need to go and find, okay, what's the age of this water main? It's, it's a laborious process.
Yeah.
Sure.
Versus a, just pull it up on the computer like you would anything else and say, oh, okay, this, this water main was last replaced in nineteen fifty-five.
How would, how, how would we do that? How would we map all of our water mains in three D on a map? I mean, like, it's kind of like a bin model in architectural terms, right? Like, who would do that? Who would be the one that would be going through and adding in that model all of the miles and miles of pipe underground?
They would, the way we're staffed and level expertise, it would require, like the consultant.
Yeah.
To work with us. So for example, the INI study, the Infiltration Study that recently completed, I received a report Thursday, Friday last week. And so what they did was they mapped out, essentially GPSed all of the sanitary manholes that were part of that study. So now we can take that information and we had GIS and plug it in.
Import it to ours.
And all that, essentially our portion of our sanitary sewer system would be mapped almost as the name said.
So are, is the money that is in our budget here for the GIS, does that take into account hiring people to help us model all this stuff?
Is that just the system? Is that just the system or is it the system and the?
Right, and the consortium, I think you mentioned in the details.
There are a couple of options. There's a GIS consortium, so they're a group of forty or fifty communities, I think is what the government is up to currently. And so they pay tuition, so they hire a consultant for MGP, mystical GIS department or something. They develop a GIS model for all of its members. So that's one option. Another option is to work with a consultant from, for example, Baxor, who has a GIS division. And so, and because they performed our INI study, they presented the data, or had the data presentable to us in GIS rated format. So they were to, you know, they would give it to the consortium consultant, they would plug it into the GIS. Or if we went on Baxor, in their GIS option, they would just incorporate it into the GIS system or.
And once it's in, once it's in the platform and the system, is it something that you can then just make available as open data to the public? Is it's all web-based and people can just have access to it?
Absolutely, yes. So for example, King County has a very extensive, uh, G, you know, King County GIS.
Tinkered around a little bit on it, yeah.
It's fantastic, I use it almost daily. For example, some says I have a Parkway tree, is it a village tree, is it my tree? I typically use that to determine driveway width and, you know, I use that for that reason often. Not as much for my personal uses, Public Works use for property owner information, taxpayer information, but that's available as well. Area photography, so typically what, the way GIS is developed is you take that base coordinate, whether you're aerial photography, you're parcel mapping, that would come from taxpayer information, assessment information, you know, you plug in and develop kind of base layers above.
So.
And then you build from there.
So kind of like Google Maps, we, like, if you go into Google Maps, you can get a street view, you can get an aerial view. You could get a sewer view, you could get a water main view, you could, and turn on the various views?
It's a great question. So for example, on the fire hydrant example, what we would do is we would, we could take any particular hydrant, we'd take ten pictures of this fire hydrant from every angle imaginable, close up, you could have a perspective in relation to curb, tree, the street light. So during the winter season, if there's piles of snow on fire, fire, someone needs access to it, we would have location information, photographs, you would click on hydrant and it would have all of its attribute data. So the, the age of the hydrant, type of the hydrants, force, any information, attribute information imaginable. Sanitary manholes, depth, size, condition, photograph, photography, or photographs of the manhole, storm sources, some street lights, trees. From a Public Works perspective, the possibilities are, if there's zoning map, could be GIS. So all of the, our BDD tip map, all of our, any mapping that we could generate with GIS would be incorporated. Would be incorporated or product of our GIS system.
Yeah, the, um, Potavia Lead Service Line Replacement Page has a really nice GIS map that just shows where lead homes are, where galvanized. It's just like a big interactive map.
Oh, wow.
It's all GIS-driven, and you can go to your neighborhood and house and see that, oh, they've properly flagged me as lead, or they've converted me off of leads, and now it's updating the map. And so, a lot of things that are nice for the public and open data. Um, and the city of Chicago has all their crime data over a map, any crime report, uh, shows where the incident was, and anyone can dig through. So, I see it as a nice platform to build open data on, is one way that the cost seems a little bit more spread out over more use and function than just mapping things for public works.
Sure. So, going back to your planning and things like that, there was a chart in, in the budget for our inventory of our public works trucks. Um, and it had, like, the age of the truck, and what's the lifespan of the trucks, and then, how you would plan out replacement of those various things over the years. Um, so, that could be, that kind of concept could be then applied to the different types of infrastructure that we need to have replaced. Potentially.
Exactly.
Okay.
And if I could add.
Tying it together.
Internally, um, when we spoke to them, you also get a, uh, two times a week, a P I N, GIS analyst assigned to help you out with all the technical stuff. So, if you need maps made, uh, maps made for events, or for your budget, you want to tell your story of the capital improvements project of a map, and where things are gonna happen, you can have that type of storage element. And then, internally, uh, for, like, planning and zoning, we could go in properties and attach special uses, variances to each parcel and property. So, we could, we could have download PDFs attached to it for easier, uh, inventory of that future. Or if you want to, um, you know, s, uh, tell that story to the public, you can do. And nicely is, um, marketing, community development, properties for sale, stuff like that, you could also use that for, uh, marketing and economic development as well.
So, so, for something like the planning and zoning, when you're saying there's variances, and when somebody else next to them, or adjacent to them, or down the street from them is looking for a variance, then you can see what the trend is on how things have changed with other individual property owners.
Yeah, just like we put our ordinances online, now we can attach it to a property in the map, or my page, and they can see, if I want to buy X business, what's happening on it.
Utility building is a higher level, a utility building, utility building can be, uh, managed, if you will, or incorporated with GIS as well. More internal for our purposes, but not necessarily published, but certainly can use if you have GIS component. We're doing those two systems as well, so the possibilities are truly endless, but.
Cool. Okay. So, do we want to bring up that sunset?
Want is a very strong word.
That was my gentle, uh, transition.
Great. Yeah, so, we, we did have that on the agenda, I think it was a month ago, and there was a robust conversation. And my takeaway at the time was that there was a general consensus that there was a desire to eliminate the sunset annually and to just codify the payment of the garbage fees as a practice going forward. So, we will put that on the agenda for the next meeting if everybody still i- is of that feeling. Yeah, I think so.
As a pass-through.
Yeah. I would, um, the only thing I would say to that is, I know that we offer, I started writing a list of, like, what is included. You know, like, we've got the leaf pickup, we've got all this other stuff.
Recycling.
Well, I'm moving my parents in, and did you know that you can get appliances picked up? Because I didn't until I checked the website, so, there's a lot of stuff like that. If there's any other, I, you know, different villages have different things, different nice-to-haves. If there's any, you know, all, as always, if there are more services that we can provide to our community for the cost of their fee, that would be fantastic.
And we will try to do some education around that.
I mean, I might be the only person in the room who didn't know that they did appliance pickup, but.
Do they come in your house and go downstairs in your basement and do it?
Unfortunately, no, but if you get it out the, if you get it out the front door, they will help you.
That's great.
Um, I have one other question or comment. Um, where do I stick it? Um, oh, yeah, so, I've been seeing over, our, our neighbors in Carpenter'sville have been doing quite a lot of, um, street projects down in the Old Town area, and they have these really handy little signs. They stick in their construction areas that say, look at the improvement we're making. Visit our website to learn more about this fancy improvement we're making, here's the link. Can we do that?
We can.
And, and also including if it's been a grant.
Yeah.
If it's part of a grant, that's been received.
I, I do, I think it's.
It was for the inventory, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Inventory or, or.
Yeah, but just something like that, because, I don't know, I get questions a lot about, oh, there's construction here, what are you doing? What's this, what's that, what's going on here, what's going on there? And that's just sort of a nice little, let's have a web page on the website that says, here's the active projects that we're working on right now. So, if you.
Anticipated end date.
Yeah, anticipated end dates, stick a sign out there and say, hey, visit the website if you've got questions, so.
Hmm.
Awesome.
I mean, it could be just a basic sign, work in progress.
Yeah.
And, and here's your QR code.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be very fancy, I just, I really liked that, like, communication with the village, you know, with the people who live here. That's all. That's my random question of the day, sorry.
You have more questions on the budget?
Nope.
You good? We're all good?
All right.
Closing that out, um, I guess we can start with onboard reports, Andy.
Um, let me see if I have a report.
You have a new direction, right?
Well, the Arts Council is working on the Black and White Art Show, and we've met with Mockingbird, who will be, uh, giving a quote for catering, and, uh, Kirsten Woods is looking for bands to have live music there, and, uh, yeah, a lot of things are coming together, so that'll be in February still, but, um, should have some nice stuff to put on the website right after Thanksgiving.
I see.
Very cool.
That's all.
That's what he said.
No report.
No report.
Um.
Sarah.
Oh, Sarah, sorry.
No, I, I.
Go ahead, you can.
Um, just happy Thanksgiving. No report.
Then, I will go, um, with, uh, is the Debo Council gonna be on the next meeting, or when do we have that scheduled for?
I'll check if there are attorneys who are tracking that or something.
Okay. All right.
We'll make sure it gets on.
Because I want to make sure we are getting that up and going.
Are we talking about the.
The ordinance.
An ordinance.
The ordinance, so then, we can go out and we can start getting, um, volunteers to, for the Debo Council and, and start getting that lined up. Um, that would be great. Um, there's a couple kind of properties that are kind of having some action, I don't know, um, we've got any new business licenses for Leo's old place?
I've heard that it's going to be a salon, their salon, but I haven't.
So, we don't have a business license opened up on that yet?
Haven't seen anything yet.
Okay, and then, also, um, the, um, the dog washing business in between Onyx and.
Scooby Doo's.
Scooby Doo's and, and, and Mockingbird, um, don't, I know, uh, there was some interest in Mockingbird and, and that property, so I'm just wondering, hoping that, that is, they can fish their wish, um, on that. Um, and I think that's it. We don't, we don't, do we have another meeting before Dickens? I don't think we have another meeting.
I think we have, I think we have a meeting the Friday bef, the Monday before Dickens.
Okay.
Monday after, Dickens is the first. Okay, you're right, Monday after.
Right? So, so Dickens is on the first?
Next Friday.
Mm-hmm. And Saturday is the parade, the second? Um, remember, Catherine, you know all the dates, but it'll be on the website.
Yeah.
Um.
And the Facebook posts.
Mm-hmm. Um, and that's, that's all I had, and then, going around, Caleb. Chief. For us?
No, thank you.
Just a quick update on the R L camera, it's seventy-two and twenty-five, it's scheduled to be reactivated on Monday, which turns out to be a month or so. I mentioned in my bi-weekly that it would be reactivated soon, some of the children takes it all in, so. Brief and short, yeah.
Okay, all right. Franco?
No report, thank you.
No report?
Fearless leader. Village attorney, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no report.
All right. Um, okay, great, um, and then, um, I would actually like to go into executive session.
Okay. We have, I think we have multiple things to talk.
Yes, so, I've got pending litigation and personnel, what do you got?
I have pending, pending litigation, so.
Anybody else got anything?
Erica?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, so, you can take a motion.
I will, uh, move to close to the public and media under provisions of the Illinois Open Meeting Act, five ILCS, one twenty slash two, for, uh, C eleven, pending litigation, and C one, personnel and legal counsel.
Second. And one returning?
Uh, and C two, collective negotiation matters.
And we will be leaving.
And we will be, uh, exiting out of, uh, executive session and not returning to public.
Second. Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tripper?
Yes.
And Trustee Sopp.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Can we have this back? Last for five, I need a.